Good evening. This is the May 14, 2020, meeting of the Municipal of Anchorage Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Iker?
Here.
Ms. McKay?
Here.
Ms. Hickock?
Here.
Mr. Hale?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Emmerton?
Here.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Sabina?
Here.
Thank you.
Are we done? Okay. Sorry. This is the first meeting that this board has done with the new normal, so it might be a little awkward, but we'll get through it. Next item on the agenda are the minutes. We have minutes for Thursday, February 13, 2020. May I have a motion for approval, please?
This is Commissioner Emmerton. I move to approve.
Can I have a second? Ms. Hickock, seconds. Are there any additions or deletions? Changes? Approved? Is there any objection to approval of the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, the minutes are approved, and we'll move on to special order of business disclosures. Are there any disclosures for this evening?
I have a disclosure.
Go ahead, Ms. Hickock.
In the case of 2020-0054, I wanted to disclose that the company I work for, the boutique company, is doing the plating action for that project. However, I didn't want to state that I did not work on that project, nor do I have any financial interest in the project. Sorry.
Okay, thank you. And I know that Ms. Iker was not in attendance for the meeting, so she will not be able to vote on the resolution. So, yeah, we will need a motion on Tanya, or Ms. Hickock, excuse me, for her participation. Positive motion, please. Ms. Emmerton moves to direct participation. Ms. Iker, seconds. So, be able to participate, and I guess we'll move on. Hmm? Oh, sorry. Do you want to vote? Okay, so we're voting on the participation of Ms. Hickock for case 2020-0054.
Ms. Iker?
It's a voice vote.
Yes, I'm here.
Are you voting yes to, for Ms. Hickock to participate in that case?
I'm yes. How do I vote?
Just say yes or no.
Yes, I am voting.
Thank you. Ms. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yeah.
Mr. Smythe?
Yeah.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Sabina?
Yes.
Thank you. And that's it. So it's unanimous, and Ms. Hickock is directed to participate in case 2020-0054. Next up, we have election of officers. Okay, so we'll move that, we'll move that to the end of the agenda if there's not any... Okay. We need a motion to reorder the agenda to move the annual election of officers to the end. Boy, how do I not run it? I don't, did we get it? It's not big enough.
For clarification for the board members on the chat, all you need to do is type in motion if you want to make a motion, type in second if you want to make a second. If you have a question, type a question mark. We do everything else verbally. Thank you.
Yeah, I got it.
I moved to reorder the consent agenda, or the agenda to move the election of the officers to the end of the meeting.
And that's Ms. Iker?
Yes.
And Mr. Smythe, one of the Dales. Seconded. Okay. Is there any objection? Seeing none, the agenda is reordered, and the election of officers will be at the end. Now we're at the consent agenda. So the consent agenda is all items before the board that do not require a public hearing. All items approved by motion without debate. Do I, can I have a positive motion? See, I can't see what's going on here. This? Okay. Ms. Emmerton, obviously we got two motions. Ms. Iker, whoa, what happened there? So, Ms. Iker, I have a positive motion for the consent agenda and a second from Mr. Lang. And does anyone wish to pull anything, pull the resolution for discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote? Okay. Well, if there aren't, if there's no objection, if there isn't any objection, the consent agenda is approved, and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. No appearance requests, no unfinished business, nothing on the regular agenda, and we're to public hearings. So it's a new world out here. The first two cases are variance cases, so I'm going to read the procedure to be followed. The chair shall introduce the variance and explain the procedure to be followed. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to the sufficiency of notice. The staff will present a brief outline of the variance. The board members and the applicant may then ask questions of the staff through the chair. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the applicant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the variance should be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the applicant through the chair. The hearing shall then be open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes. Individuals have three minutes. The time is kept by the secretary, and she will indicate when your time is up. All persons who testify may be questioned by board members, the staff, and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the applicant, shall have right of rebuttal. The chair will close the public hearing, and the matter will rest with the board. Action by the board shall require the favorable vote of a majority of the fully constituted board. The fully constituted board is nine members. The fully constituted board shall include all members of the board, including vacancies, not excused for conflict of interests. For a variance to be granted, all eight standards must be met. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case, and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal to Superior Court. So with that, this is case 2020-0054, Sand Hill Development. And will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Chair McKay. On March 17, 2020, a total of 114 public hearing notices were mailed.
Are there any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case by the board? Seeing none, will the staff present a brief outline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request to allow for an increase in lot coverage from 30% maximum to 50% maximum in the R1 Single Family Zoning District for both single-story and two-story structures. Title 21 allows for 30% max lot coverage unless the structure is less than 16 feet in height and on a lot less than 10,000 square feet, which allows 40% maximum lot coverage. This allows for a ranch-style home to have slightly more lot coverage than a traditional two-story home. The petitioner is requesting a maximum lot coverage of 50% to reduce the building challenges and costs associated with building on slope lots. This will allow the builder to construct homes with three-car garage and potential accessory dwelling unit. There is topography present on the petitioner's lot. The petitioner has received preliminary plat approval of a 42-lot subdivision on the subject property known as Sand Hill Reserve Subdivision. The petitioner is requesting the variance to create a community which will allow for varied styles of architectural scale and form, permit a third bay car for car storage to reduce driveway and on-street parking, and allow buyers to add an attached accessory dwelling unit to their home. The West Anchorage District Plan notes that higher-density development benefits housing availability and diversity by being more affordable and yielding more housing units per acre of land while addressing the housing shortage. The 2040 Plan calls for the need for 20,000 residential units by 2040. The addition of residential units is necessary to meet the municipality's future needs and is in line with adopted goals and policies to provide for a variety of housing types. The petitioner has included in their application a table of other lot coverage ratios found across similar cities that allow the same maximum lot coverage or higher ratios than the requested variance. Onto the findings. In the matter of Condition A, the staff finds the standard has been met. There is topography on the petitioner's lot, as shown on the topo map provided in their application. The varied topography differences on the property result in steep road grades and a variety of sloping lots that some will be uphill, downhill, and side-sloping. This terrain makes building homes more challenging, as slight slopes of sites incur more building cost due to excavation, increase in concrete foundation, and fill removal of excavated materials. These factors constrain the builder area of the lot, and the petitioner wishes to increase the max lot coverage ratios for both two-story and the single-family structure. Granting the variance will reduce the challenges associated with building on a slope lot and allow for homes with accessory dwelling units and three-car garages. Given the development constraints posed by the topography, exceptional physical circumstances are found to exist on the petitioner's lots. In the matters of Standard B, staff finds that the standard is met. The topography is steeper than the topography of some nearby lots in the same zoning district, and strict application of the code in conjunction with the constraints posed by the slopes referenced in Standard A would create an undue hardship in the builder's ability to recapture some of the development cost. Decks, porches, and accessory dwelling units attached to single-family homes are amenities commonly enjoyed by similar properties in the area. Standard C, staff finds that that standard has been met. This speaks to the peculiarity of the lot that must arise out of some natural or physical condition of the lot. Let's see here, A, let me get my place. Structures placed in lots are under a condition, a natural one, whether the need for the variance were, are beyond the control of the petitioner, or whether they are self-imposed hardship or inconvenience. There is a peculiar of the lot arising from a unique natural, physical condition with the slopes associated with development of the property, and the need for the variance is a result of that condition of the land, which is beyond control of the petitioner. Preparing that slope lot for construction will add additional cost over traditional construction on flat land. Granting that variance will allow the developer to construct homes. The petitioner would be, will be able to construct an attached accessory dwelling unit which fulfills Housing Policy Number 15 of the Anchorage, 2020 Anchorage Bowl Comprehensive Plan. This will allow for more efficient and flexible use of housing, land supply, and infrastructure. In the matters of Standard D, staff finds that that has been met. The standard assumes the violation that will be injurious to the neighborhood or detriment to the public welfare if a variance is granted. The variance would not adversely affect the use of adjacent property. Drainage and runoff due to the amount of lot coverage will be addressed during the building permitting process during the development of the homes. If this variance is granted, it applies to all lots within the proposed subdivision and does not give one property an exception not enjoyed by others. It would create parity, which would ensure that no one lot is negatively impacted, as it is the whole subdivision. In the standard E, staff finds that it has been met. The requested variance is dimensional and would not allow or prohibit the use or change of the character of the zoning district. The proposed internal accessory dwelling units are allowed in the R1 zoning district and will be required to meet the standards of AMC 210507OD. Accessory dwelling units and placement of the structures meeting setbacks is in keeping with the intent of the code. Staff finds Standard F has been met. There are no identified health or safety issues with the proposed structures or maximum lot coverage variance. Standard G has been met. This is not applicable to detached, single-family residences. Standard H has been found to be met. The requested variance is the minimum variance that will make a possible reasonable use of the land due to topography. Structures including decks and porches that are in excess of 30 inches are counted in the lot coverage ratio. The topography and placement of the homes will require the decks and front entry porches or side porches to be above 30 inches by design, and granting the increased lot coverage variance will allow for the petitioner to work with the constraints of the land to build single-family homes with accessory dwelling units and to include decks and porches, which is a common, enjoyable right in a neighborhood. With that being said, staff finds that all eight standards have been substantially met and are subject to the conditions found on Page 6 of the staff packet, which are 1, 2, 3, and the planning staff would also like to add 4 and 5. And I'll read out 4 and 5 to the record. Number 4, resolve with private development the need to revise the hydrological analysis to reflect the increased allowable lot coverage and resize the drainage infiltration improvements accordingly. And number 5, which is this variance, is subject to recording the approved preliminary plat for Sand Hill Reserve Subdivision, S12139/S12530. And that's because this received preliminary plat approval for the, for lots, and this variance would apply to each of the lots. Thank you, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff by the board? Mr. Hale?
Yeah, this is Dave Hale through the chair. Just wondering if staff looked at, if the smaller lots, it seems like they compound the topography issue. Is that, is that true, do you think?
Through the chair, Mr. Hale, so you're saying the smaller lots compound the issue of, can you clarify?
Yeah, we've got a topography issue, and the smaller the lot, the harder it's going to be to mitigate those topographic issues, right?
As far as placement of the structure, yes.
I'm wondering, what, what size do the lots need to be to comply with the 30% now?
That would be a question to the petitioner. Are you asking what the minimum lot size is of the R1 zoning district?
Yeah, for 30% coverage. It's like around 10,000, right?
Well, minimum lot size is 6,000. For the, for the ranch to be 40%, then it has to be on a lot less than 10,000 square feet. So for a two-story, it's, there's, there's a kind of a double, in the R1 zoning district, there's 30%, but if you're a ranch home, it's 40% max lot coverage, but that lot has to be less than 10,000 square feet, which a fair number of these are.
Yeah, I guess my primary question was just that C, or not C, but the exceptional and undue hardship of the topography, it seems to be worsened by having smaller lots and larger lots.
I would ask that of the engineer of the petitioner.
Okay, we can, we can talk to them in a bit. Thanks.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes, thank you. Through the chair, Francis, you'd said that the lot coverage percentage includes decks over 30 inches. Did I hear that correctly?
Through the chair, Mr. Smythe, yeah, this is Sean Odell, the planner for this. Francis is next. Yes, in the code, anything over 30 inches is included, so if you have a deck on the back like that, or some porches, because it's a side hill and you have a, say, a, what we call a California side split or something where it goes up midway, that's going to count towards your max lot coverage. So you can see that that can add up fairly quick. If you have a 1,000-square-foot ranch, 10% is going to be 100 feet, and you could have a small deck and a porch that could use that.
Sorry about the name, Sean. I was looking at things. But with that, if this, if this variance were approved, there's no way now that you would distinguish between building foundation, square footage, home, square footage, and deck square footage, correct? It would all be lot coverage under the current definition?
That is correct.
And then, is there any, can you provide any insight into why this was presented as all lots instead of the most effective, most affected, or was there any discussion or history on that? This one surprises me, is it's all lots get the same increase? And that's, no more questions.
The petitioner was looking at other cities with similar lot sizes, and they're creating this new subdivision, and that was the will of the petitioner.
Okay, Ms. Iker?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mr. Smythe actually asked part of my question. I'm going to ask a follow-up clarifying question, and then I have one additional. So it looks to me from the topo map that maybe seven or eight lots are really affected by the slope, and I was wondering if staff had any follow-up as far as the conversation that was had with the petitioner, because there seems to be a disconnect between what we're being asked to grant a blanket variance for an entire subdivision, and these findings that staff has put together seem to really apply to only seven or eight of the lots within the subdivision. And so I have a concern about an overreach of the findings, and if staff has any comment on that, I would find that helpful.
So we could also ask the petitioner's representative as well, the engineer. The road there, Sand Hill Drive, has not been put in, and with the topography, it may require, like they said, some, the road grades adjusted, which may affect the lots as well. Driveways can't be over 10%. That may adjust the way the home sits, so we're not entirely sure that it's those seven lots. It may be more lots are affected than that. That would be a good question for the petitioner's representative.
Okay, thank you. One more question, if I may. Through the chair, Sean, can you talk us through the reasoning behind Condition Number Meaning, was that just a negotiated part of the preliminary plat approval, or is that relating to something else? And does it apply to any seven lots within the subdivision, or a particular seven?
Yes, let me get my notes out here. So the petitioner had, you know, ADOs are allowed on a development regardless, but they had, they had put forth in their kind of application here that if they're going to be, if they could be granted a variance, then they will also, at a minimum, do seven dwelling units in the project.
No further questions at this time.
Mr. Lang?
Thank you. Through the chair, I have several questions for staff. Is there a precedent for granting a blanket lot coverage variance like this on a preliminary plat?
Through the chair, Mr. Lang, this is Dave Whitfield. No, there is not a precedent for a blanket lot coverage variance that I'm aware of. In my time with the planning department, we've seen lot coverage variances for individual lots, but this is the first one that included an entire newly-created subdivision.
Thank you. Mr. Odell, in Finding A, you say that the varied terrain constrains the buildable area. How does increasing the lot coverage reduce the cost of building on a sloped lot? Wouldn't it make more sense to grant a height variance?
Through the chair, Mr. Lang. So it's what the petitioner requested for the size rather than going higher due to the, probably the zoning standard. They also just said that they'll be able to recoup some of those costs in the cost of excavation and foundation by making it a little bit larger. I believe some of that was the fact that decks and porches are going to count against their max lot coverage, whereas if it was a little bit flatter, they wouldn't. So in essence, they may be building a similar building foundation size, but those decks and porches count towards the max lot coverage.
Okay, so thank you for that. If I'm understanding that correctly, then on a 6,000-square-foot lot, they'll be allowed to have 3,000 square feet of lot coverage, which is a pretty big footprint, and on a 10,000-square-foot lot, they'll be allowed 5,000 square feet of footprint.
Through the chair, John, is that, is that, is that for the 50%? Is what your figures are?
Yes, yeah.
Yep. Doing the math in my head, that sounds right.
Okay. Another question. In Finding B, the physical circumstances, isn't the hardship self-imposed based on the subdivision design that's still preliminary?
Well, one, we're basically saying that it's the topography and the constraints posed by the slopes. Those were there, kind of regardless of the way the pie is sliced for a plating action. is sliced for plating actions.
Um, thank you, I think, I think Mr. Hale also addressed that, if they designed fewer lots in the subdivision, there wouldn't be as much burden on the individual lots. Um, another question, uh, in finding E, uh, the standard says, um, uh, it will, the variance if granted does not change the character of the zoning districts, uh, and does not permit a use not otherwise permitted in the district which the property lies in, uh, 50% lot coverage goes directly against the ordinance for accessory dwelling units, which prohibits increasing lot coverage. Uh, specifically, um, it says lot coverage of the principal dwelling unit and all accessory structures combined, including but not limited to the ADU, shall be less than or equal to the maximum lot coverage allowed by the zoning district, isn't this kind of a cheat going around what you encode there? And then, uh, adding on to that, at the very end of that ordinance, it says no variances shall be granted from the standards and provisions of this section.
Uh, through the chair, uh, John, uh, Mr. Lang, so, just to clarify, this variance is not for the ADUs, it is to increase allowed max lot coverage, part of their justification for this request is that they're committing to only providing attached ADUs, which maintains single-family context of zoning district, and that at least seven of the lots will provide ADUs, which supports, uh, goals and needs identified in the Anchorage 2040 plan of bringing on, uh, 2,000 additional residential units by 2040.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, one last question, uh, and this is, this comment has been made by a couple of the other board members, um, finding H, you say the request to the variance is a minimum variance, uh, necessary, but again, we're looking at, at only lots seven through 14 in the proposed preliminary plat having an extreme topography, is that really meeting the standard if it's only seven of a lot?
Uh, through the chair, once again, I, you know, I would refer to the applicant on this as far as how they're kind of, where they're going to place the structures and what, what they're coming up against with the road design, driveways, um, and some of the other topography there. That is, that is a question that, uh, the petitioner, you can pose.
Thank you, uh, I have no further questions.
Ms. Hickock.
I guess I just have one, uh, through the chair, I just have one, um, follow-up question, would be, um, did the petitioner look at rezoning instead of a variance, perhaps the R2M, which has a higher lot coverage?
Through the chair, uh, Ms. Hickock, this is Dave Whitfield, no, um, it's, uh, it's our understanding that the petitioner did not look at the possibility of rezoning the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff by the board? Okay, seeing none, um, is the applicant online?
Through the chair, the applicant is here.
Okay, would you state your name and spell it for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Connie O'Shawara, I'm the managing member of Sand Lake Development, LLC, with me this evening is, uh, Brandon Marquette, um, Triad engineer, and, uh, Jim McCollum, as well as, uh, my partner.
Thank you, would you please present your case?
Yes, thank you, through the chair, I would like to respond to community concerns that have been, uh, brought forth through a series of emails and FaceTime and, uh, Nextdoor, um, the area that has been cleared was required by the municipality to install a 60-foot wide publicly dedicated street, water sewer, and other utilities. We have hired ISA certified arborist Mike Post from Tall Trinbers, who recently completed an assessment of the property, his comments are, most of the spruce that are still green are good trees, there are pockets of large and small dead spruce that are obvious, a majority of the mature birch have issues with broken off dead tops, an indication that there is decay in the trunk over, and leaves will fall, most small birch, six inches and less than die under, are still healthy, any spaplings are still good, it is our intent through the covenants and codes and restrictions, we will require there will be at least two spruce trees on each lot, either existing or a new tree with a minimum height of eight feet, because spruce is the fastest growing tree for reforestation in this particular area. Junior accessory dwelling units are smaller and integrated into the home, which will maintain the single-family home appearance, a JADU shall have a maximum of 700 square feet, the intent of which is to provide multi-generational housing for grandparents, adult children, and other family members, there are strict regulations in the sub, in the subdivisions, covenants, codes, and restrictions for Sand Hill Reserve prohibiting short-term rentals, Airbnb, and vacation rentals. There have been some questions regarding the timing of the variance request, the request for a variance in lot coverage ratios was submitted to the municipality on March 5th, 2020, after the preliminary plat was approved by the plating board, both of these actions are heard by different boards and cannot be completed at the same time. After the plat was approved, the builders in Sand Hill Reserve began designing house plans for specific lots, they discovered the topography more challenging than anticipated, considering any deck above 30 inches in height needs to be included in the lot coverage ratios, in addition, the requirement to seven JADUs requires an increase in lot coverage ratios, as well as the topo challenges, since the topo on each individual lot may vary considerably. I would like to point out that our plan is to have ranches with casitas at the back of the house, which is usually a bedroom, a bathroom, and perhaps a small living area and a kitchen set, due to the, the topography, we are also anticipating having uphill lots, um, which will have, uh, most of them will have three-car garage bays, one bay of which could connect to a lower le, a basement level, we also, due to the topography, will be able to have ranches with, um, sloping downhill lots, where, um, these lower basement walkout levels will be perfect for, uh, uh, junior accessory dwelling units, so we have three very distinct plans that we've worked with, within the, within the topo, and in regards to your questions about where these shall be, you know, we have spent a lot of time talking to the builders, I personally have worked in this area of West Anchorage for the past several years, and we need to let the market dictate whether it's going to be a ranch with walkout lower level, an uphill, uh, property with a large garage, uh, and, or, uh, even, uh, an accessory dwelling unit above a garage, but what I want to assure the community and the board is that it, they, these types of homes will maintain the single-family character and streetscape of the community, and in support of, uh, this request, I would like to talk to you about some demographics and trends, Alaska's senior population is projected, projected to grow rapidly over the next 15 years, this is Alaska Economics Trends Magazine in May 2020, Alaska's senior population has increased by more than 5% per year since 2010, it's faster growing than any other state in the nation, Alaska ranks number one in the nation for multi-generation households, and increased 35% between 2014 and 2018, for a total of 10,559 multi-generation households, West Anchorage has 2,444 persons, 65 years of age, the average cost of assisted living in Anchorage is about $5,500 per month, or around $66,000 annually, the long-term care cost in the nation with assisted living homes, 35% above the US average, and nursing homes, 64% uh, above the national average, the second highest in the country, we need these JADUs to accommodate this aging population. In April 2020, there were 34 homes for sale in West Anchorage, that's MLS Area 20, a decrease of 49% of homes available since last year for this very same time, today there are only 52 homes available in all price points in West Anchorage, and only seven homes for sale between 500 and 700,000, which is the price range of homes anticipated in the Sand Hill Reserve, this is not your typical subdivision based upon not only the topography, but the variety of builders that we are going to be putting into the subdivision, many subdivisions today are controlled and owned by a single builder, um, five builders will be building homes in Sand Hill Reserve, providing a variety of architectural styles, the builders are Trevi Builders, Alexander Homes, Vizier Construction, and John Hank Meyer Homes, and introducing another new builder into the community, Rick and Birch Homes, I have included several photographs of existing homes that these new builders have built, which will create a wide variety of architectural style and diversity, bringing a fresh new approach, uh, to home building in Anchorage, so that this subdivision will stand out not only as a result of the variety of its topology, and the integration of small JADUs into single-family homes, but also the architectural detail of some of these homes, creating a new streetscape, uh, for Anchorage as far as single-family subdivisions, and I want to reiterate, this is a single-family subdivision, and we are, uh, limiting our number of ADUs to seven, no Airbnbs, no, uh, other types of accessory dwelling units on a short-term basis, but this is for our senior population, uh, that is growing every month in Anchorage, thank you very much, and now I will turn it over to, uh, Brandon Marquette, uh, who has some more technical information to share with you, thank you very much.
This is-
Yes, this is, again, this is Brandon Marquette, Triad engineering-
Hang on, hang on, I just wanted to let you know, you only have two minutes and 25 seconds left.
Okay, um, we've provided a, a kind of a written response to the comments, I hope the, the board has been able to see those, um, I won't, uh, belabor the last two minutes with those, with those points, that you can read those, I would like to address, uh, some of the comments related to the plat, um, configuration, uh, we spent, um, quite a bit of effort, uh, finalizing and fine-tuning this plat configuration to fit the topography of this project as best as we possibly can, uh, a couple of features that are noteworthy is that access to Sand Lake from this development is prohibited by DOT, furthermore, the access points on West Indian Avenue are pinned into their locations, and we can't not, we cannot move them east or west, uh, more than a couple of feet, so we are literally tied into these locations, uh, at West Indian Avenue with no other points of access, uh, to and from the site, and this site has 80 feet of topography relief from west to east, uh, I know the focus has been the, the eight lots in the northeast corner, but, excuse me, the lots along the western loop, uh, portion of the loop, experience, uh, topographic relief in the 14 to 16-foot range, from, from the west side to the, to the east side, the lots on the lower end, on the east side, experienced 30 feet of relief from one side to the other, so, uh, it's fair to say that all lots are impacted by this development, not just a few, uh, this is a, a very challenging site topographically, topographically to work with, and we do feel as a development team that we have, uh, um, tweaked and, and nudged and adjusted this plat, and so we found lots that fit the topography to the best we could possibly, the best we possibly could with the constraints that we're working with, we just wanted to make that point, um, any comments or some of the initial questions from the board, and I'm not sure how we're doing on time.
You have 30 seconds left.
Uh, go just reserve the reading time, please.
Okay. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board members? Okay, I'm trying to separate these from what we had before. Okay, Mr. Smythe.
Uh, thank you, uh, through the chair, um, for either of the two presenters, I wanted, uh, one question that I kept, I, I heard asked earlier, and I, and I didn't get a response, and I'd, I'd love to hear from the presenters, there's been discussion about, uh, the lot coverage increase helping to assist in development cost, and I think it was mentioned earlier that the lot, from, from my perspective, the, the larger the footprint, also the more expensive, the, the more, the increased cost, so how does the, how does the increased lot coverage actually, um, reduce the cost for construction? And, uh, thank you.
Yes, again, this is Brandon with Triad, um, we're anticipating that even just the smaller footprints will have engineered or specially designed foundations associated with the topography, um, that would increase the construction cost to the home, and as a result of that increase in the footprint would help offset that cost, as you say, the, the slightly more expensive house would help, uh, offset the cost of the engineered, um, foundation.
So, as a, as a follow-up, we're, we're talking about some smaller lots in the 6,000 square feet range, and, and half of that is nearly 3,000 square feet, uh, if their ranches are, are the goal, then that puts you around 2,400 square feet, and those are, are fairly substantial square foot footprint sizes for single-family residences, even with a 700 four, 700 square foot, um, junior ADU, as you referred to, so, I, I just wanted to point that, is there any, any response to that, uh, a, with the plan, um, I'd heard mentioned 500 to 700,000 dollar homes being considered, um, what the point, is the goal a 24 to 3,000 square foot, single-family home on a steep lot, is that the real challenge?
Uh, uh, I would like to respond to that, so, uh, the, uh, through the chair, the, uh, the square footage is, uh, living square footage, but plus it is also garage square footage, so if you have 3,000 square feet, uh, one of the things that we're finding in the marketplace is, uh, um, especially people that are downsizing to ranches want to have a large garage, and generally that large garage is around 600 square feet, and that is counted into the square footage of the, the structure, so if you have three, if you have, uh, 6,000 square feet, you have 3,000, you take 600, uh, 700 for the, uh, for the garage, you have a little bit of opportunity for, uh, you know, a casita at the back of the house, and then if you have a slope that you have to deal with, the porch and the deck are also counted into that square footage, so basically, with, one of the things that we found is that, you know, taking all that into consideration, you get about 1,800 square feet of living area, which accommodates three bedrooms, you know, two to two and a half baths, a large double or tuba car garage, and decky.
Thanks, we had to-
Mr. Hale.
Thanks, through the chair, it, it sounds like, you know, you want, uh, the, the living room, the garage, the deck, all that stuff counts toward the square footage, the topography of the lots, uh, seem more easily mitigated with larger lots, typically, everything seems to point to the need for larger lots, not just to meet the code, but to build the type of house that you want, so why, why the focus on such small lots?
It really is a question of meeting the market, because the larger the lot, the cost of the lot is not so much in the land itself, but it's in the cost for the road and the, and the water sewer extension, and so the, the wider the lot that you have, the more expensive it is going to be, so, in reality, if you are going to have a larger lot, and instead of a 50 or 60-foot wide lot, you're going to have a 70 or an 80-foot wide lot, uh, which is considered luxury in the marketplace, then you're talking about lots that are going to be like $180,000, and then, you know, if 25% of your lot value, value has to be attributed towards the house, you know, then you're way above 700 to 800- know, then you're way above 700 to 800,000 dollars, and you're out of the marketplace for workforce and affordable housing. And the goal here is to create some housing that is going to be moderately priced. And I know a half a million dollars does seem like a lot of money, but in reality, that is going to be in reconstruction and average-priced homes. Last year, the average price of a building per m was $400,000, and that does not include the price of the lot. These lots will be sold between 140 and 151,000 dollars, reaching that goal of 500 to the high 60s. And with the addition of some JADUs, that makes it really affordable for a family that has grandparents or an adult child coming home, someone that, a mother-in-law that can care for the grandchildren, so they don't have to pay for outside daycare, or place an elderly parent in assisted living at a rate of $5,500 per month. And so that is the goal. And on a national basis, lots are getting smaller. And I know that there's been negative comments about Huffman Timbers, but Huffman Timbers had 50-foot wide lots with a handful of 60-foot wide lots, and it met a market demand. We had a wide variety of families living in that subdivision. One-third of all the homes that were built in Huffman Timbers, which wasn't a surprise to me, were actually ranch homes, and they were as small as 1,500 square feet. But the problem was with that, they all wanted to have desks, larger desks, and some of them did go ahead and put them in illegally. If you drive through the subdivision, you can see that. And they all wanted to also have triple-car garages.
A follow-up on that, the chair. So it sounds like you guys made the choice, just based on cost and all the other factors that you mentioned, to go with the smaller lots. Is that correct?
We based it not only on cost, but market needs.
Right, right.
To make it, to make it affordable. Not everyone can afford, in Anchorage, Alaska, to live on an acre lot or even a 10,000 or 15,000 square foot lot.
Sure. So you guys made the choice to go with the smaller lots. So if you had gone with the larger lots, you'd meet the code, but you decided to go with the smaller one, so how is this not self-imposed?
This does meet code for the R1 zoning. We are asking for the variance to increase our lot coverage ratio due to the topography. And if you can refer to the information that is in your packet, you will see that Anchorage has the strictest and smallest lot coverage ratios of almost any city in Alaska or in the west coast and the northwest.
Could be, but still it's a choice between you using small or large lots, where large lots, you could meet the code, and you chose the small ones where you can't meet the code. So it sounds to me like it's self-imposed.
The point she was trying to make is that if we go with larger lots, they're not going to sell. And so there's no point in doing a project with large lots if we're not going to be able to sell them.
Because it doesn't meet the market demand.
Excuse me, this is the chair. You're going to have to identify yourself when you start talking, because we don't, we need to record this and who says what. So if you just introduce yourself before you start to speak, that would be great.
My apologies. This was Tanya Oshimer.
Thank you. Mr. Hale, are you satisfied? You're good? Okay. Mr. Lang.
Through the chair. Yes, if I understand a comment that was made earlier, your intention is for the ADUs to be under the ranch homes on the down slope?
This is Tanya Oshimer through the chair. So the ranch homes, the ADUs could be the lower level of a ranch home, they could be above a garage, above a garage, or they could be behind a home that has a garage with access to a small JADU behind the garage. So there's three different types of potential JADUs.
Thank you. Following up on that, how did that, having the ADU underneath a ranch home or over a garage, how did that affect the lot coverage?
Generally speaking, the foundation would be a little bit larger to accommodate that lower level.
If it's under the, if it's under the ranch house, it's under the ranch house. I don't see how it, unless it sticks out. I mean, that's, but I'll move on with another question. Thank you.
Okay.
You've, you've said that you're looking for 50% lot coverage. You've showed us some example homes. Do you have any plot plans or site plans that would show us what this 50% lot coverage would look like for the entire site?
That could certainly, we do not have that at this time. It could certainly be provided to you. We can have footprints that would demonstrate all of that.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Anyone else from the board have a question of the applicant? Are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
I have a question for the applicant.
Oh, excuse me. Ms. Hickok.
Through the chair, to Mr. Marquez, what is the plan, the grading plan for the existing vegetation? Is it to be all graded, so no existing veg will remain? Or what does that look like?
Through the chair, this is, this is Brandon Marquez. The clearing plan has been phased intentionally in three separate phases to minimize the clearing to the maximum extent possible. The goal with this development was to maintain the maximum amount of vegetation on the property for as long as we possibly can. And so the first phase of clearing was limited to just the back of curb within the road corridor, so that the lots could be walked and could be seen by the builders. The second phase expanded the clearing out slightly to cover the full footprint of the road improvements. And then Phase Three will include some smaller clearing to be able to put in the distribution system for power and shower utilities. That is not our intention to mass grade this site and cut down every tree that we can find. We have been trying to phase this thing such that it works with the community as well as the development.
As far as percentage of existing veg to remain in the end condition, what would you estimate that at?
Through the chair, that's a very good question. I can see possibly 30% vegetation remaining. It'd be along the outer perimeter. There'll be some considerable grading within the interior loop to meet the elevation changes as the road comes around from west to east. But we are, we are trying to leave it selective for the home builders, the idea being that they might have a better idea on what building they want to put in there than I did with my grading plan. And so we're hoping to leave as many trees as we possibly can.
Through the chair, I'll have a follow-up question for staff.
Any other questions of the applicant by board members? Okay. And now, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
Chairman Kay, this is Sean Noe.
So with that, we'll open the public hearing.
Questioning app for staff?
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Through the chair, Mr. O'Dowd, isn't there a provision in some other zoning districts where they have a percent veg to remain, like in Girdwood or in Alpine Slope?
Through the chair, Tanya, we're going to look that up. There is something in Girdwood. Hang on one second here. Yes, so in Girdwood, there's a minimum vegetation coverage. Single, I'll read, I'll read it here. It's Table 2109-10, Minimum Vegetation Coverage by Use. And they're saying for, we'll just read the single-family or two-family residential, natural vegetation 30%, total perennial surface including natural vegetation 50%. So it looks like 30% in Girdwood for natural vegetation. And it says the standards given in Table 2109-10, which is what I was referring to, are the minimum percentage of any lot to be maintained as natural vegetation. So yes, to answer your question, there is.
Okay, I just wanted to point that out, just because it's sad to see a complete site denuded, especially when it has environmental constraints such as existing vegetation.
Is that everything, Ms. Hickok?
That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to testify in case 2020-0054?
Yes, we do have a few people that will have to call in. So I can call them in now. Hi, is this Jocelyn Pemberton?
Yes, it is.
This is Ziba calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Okay.
And before we get started, if you could mute your, if you're listening on the TV or computer.
Oh, yeah. I'll walk away from it.
Thank you so much. And are you testifying as an individual?
I am.
Okay, you'll have three minutes for your public testimony. The call will end after you make your comment, unless there are any questions from the board. Please state your name for the record, and then your time will begin.
Am I the first one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You can go ahead.
Hi, yes, my name is Jocelyn Pemberton, and I am a resident in the Sand Lake area. And thank you for the opportunity to provide public testimony. I have concerns about how this area is being developed, and starts with my lack of understanding of what the point is of having municipal codes that protect the desires and aesthetics of communities, if variances are going to be granted to large developments. There was a question earlier about whether there's a precedent for that, and I believe the answer was no. This developer had the option to build less houses on larger lots and avoid building on the sloped section of the land and still meet our municipal codes. Most of the houses exist on flat land, only about seven of them are on the sloped land. Mr. Hale is right, this is a self-imposed problem. This building area is not consistent with the aesthetics in this area. Adjacent lots are treed, they're larger lots. All are built on slope along that same bank of Sand Lake, and all have managed to meet those lot coverage codes without a variance needed and without clear cutting the trees from, from the lots. The picture that the developer posted on their glossy flyer is totally misleading, as there appears to be about 50 feet between the homes and the photos. There is no way this rendering matches reality. I'm also not clear on what changed from the original plan to now. The topography certainly didn't change. This feels like a bait and switch and is disingenuous. I also have concerns when this question was brought up. It feels like this is against Title 21 to have a variance to allow the ADUs. And I'm not clear as to whether a variance would be needed without the ADUs. The petitioner just spoke about the aging population and expense of assisted living homes as justification for the variance. You can't have it both ways. The staff response to the committee's member question regarding Title 21 restricting the use of the variance to allow for ADUs was that it wasn't the basis of their request. Yet Tanya just used it in her argument. Again, this is disingenuous. I also have concerns regarding the notice period occurring during the hunker-down. There are small postings on trees 20 feet off of the road that were posted at a time that we were all holed up in our homes. The 145 notices that were apparently mailed went to no one that I can find in the neighborhood, including the adjacent property. 60 or so comments have come in on the municipality website against this variance, and only one for it. And that one was specific to the need of having additional dwelling units on properties for aging population, which again, is not the basis of this argument. Just living in this neighborhood, I have concerns for traffic, parking, water levels in Sand Lake, and crowding schools in the area. We've had significant development over the past 10 years, and I don't need, we don't need to squeeze in more houses now. This is greedy, and the developers should go back to the original plan of 37 homes on larger lots.
Okay, your time is up.
Thank you.
Are there any questions of Ms. Pemberton by the board? Anyone at all? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Pemberton.
Thank you.
Your testimony.
Hi, is this Joseph?
Yeah.
This is Ziba calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Hi.
Hi.
I haven't heard anything back, so I didn't know if I made the list or not.
You're on it. Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Perfect. You'll have three minutes for your public testimony. If there are no questions, after you provide your comments, the call will end. Go ahead and state your name for the record, and then your time will begin.
Okay, Joseph Benucci.
Go ahead.
My name is Joseph Benucci. I'm a resident of Sand Lake, and I'm calling to testify in opposition to the development that is under consideration, the removal of large standard trees that is visible from everywhere on the lake, as well as the problems that have been outlined with stormwater runoff, parking, snow, storage removal, and processing in the winter, as well as the increased traffic on Sand Lake Road, in addition to areas related to very large homes. I believe several of them, well over 6,000 square feet, others at 7, 8, and 9,000 square feet, are really not consistent with the Sand Lake neighborhood that I live in. I've seen the designs, I've seen the comments from the developer stating such things that three-car garages are required in Alaska. You will find that most of the properties in and around Sand Lake do not have three-car garages. I don't view that and the size of the homes as being really in the scheme of the development of current properties around the Sand Lake area. And again, in addition to, I think, what is piecemeal approvals, there have been recent traffic issues based on all of the homes, linked into what was formerly the South Anchorage gravel pits off of Sand Lake Road, just north of Diamond and on the east side, as well as all of the development that is about to occur on the west side of Sand Lake Road, in the current landfill that is being built north of Diamond. And I think the development under proposal needs to be reconsidered by both the developer and the city. Thank you very much for this opportunity, and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Benucci? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Ryan Fortson?
Yeah.
This is Ziva calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Yes, I'm ready.
Perfect. Are you an individual or a representative of a group?
I'm an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. The call will end if there are no questions for you from the board. Um, please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
Thank you. This is Ryan Fortson. Um, there are a couple of points that I want to make. One is the developer has said that they are only going to have seven ADUs. There's nothing in the code that this thing is doing an ADU for a junior ADU. Um, a couple of people pointed out, the code doesn't allow a variance for an ADU. Even if, uh, they're, to be granted, it should only be granted for seven units. They're trying to screw horn a blanket variance for all developments, the all 42 lots, when really they only need, uh, seven, uh, variances, and they can specify the lots that they want the variance upon. With regard to the slope, um, this is certainly self-imposed. The topographical map they provided, uh, back in February, when they increased the number of lots up to 42 is the exact same topographical map that they're providing to you now. Nothing has changed. The lot, the road above the hill, they're basically have a cliff that they're trying to build on. The, uh, the code does allow a variance, uh, up above the 30%, but it only allows a 40% variance, uh, for a single-story unit. They're trying to blow that away for two-story units. And then, um, on the water drainage issue, I think it's inappropriate to say that this is going to be handled on a unit-by-unit basis. The issue is, are they building 42 units or are they going to build two units? And that's what's going to impact the water drainage, not, uh, on an individual unit. Um, and then, uh, the road itself, there's a significant depression. They're going to have to add fill to the unit, uh, around Lot 8 to increase that. Um, and it's just not feasible to build on the side of a cliff like they, like they planned. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Fortson by the board? Anyone at all? Then thank you for your, for your testimony, Mr. Fortson.
Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, is this Claire Lewis?
Yes, it is.
This is Carly calling from Ziva for your public testimony for case 2020-0054.
Yes?
Are you an individual or a representative of a group?
Individual.
Perfect. You'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. If there are no questions for you after, um, the call will be ended. Please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
Hi, my name is Claire Lewis. My husband and I have lived in the area off of 80th since 1998. And I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that in 2015, our house was right next door to a similar lot, but much smaller, that was completely treed. And the developers, the male builders at that time, completely clear cut the entire lot to allow easier excavation for them and to allow for them to build five duplexes. This neighborhood does have a few existing duplexes, but nowhere is there a cluster of duplexes. And as a result of this core building, the San Lake Community Council passed the resolution in December 2015 because people were very upset with all the trees that were cut down and that there was not any alignment with what the current neighborhood looked like. Title 21 specifically says, integrate new or renovated development into the surrounding context of the community, including its neighborhoods and street quarters. That was not done in 2015, and we have great concerns, um, that this is going to happen again, even though they're saying something about 30% of vegetation being saved. 114 letters were apparently mailed out. My husband and I did not get a letter. And as a result of COVID, the developer is taking advantage of people being hunkered down. The notice was not posted until April 21st, um, in the neighborhood. I wrote a letter at that time to our center person, Austin Quinn Davis, who thankfully told me that we had to enter comments into the photo. There was one comment that was entered on April 5th after the letters went out, and the majority of the photo comments came in after the Sand Lake Community Council meeting this previous Monday, that it was brought to the attention that this was going on. As a result, there's 67 comments that I asked the board to look at carefully. Constituents have put in a lot of time reviewing 2020, 2040 plans, and this development of Title 21, because those great concerns not going to be followed. I would like to add that Connie is very familiar with buildings since she's been developing for 40 years. Sand Lake Road is a state road, and because the development is not going to have an entry from Sand Lake Road, there was no traffic analysis of Sand Lake Road. And I wonder in an emergency or even in day-to-day, how I'm going to get out of my subdivision off of 80th when there's going to be 42 homes and probably two drivers per each home, and then the accessory dwelling units on top of it. We're talking three to four drivers per house, all entering off of 80th on the Sand Lake Road. I am totally against this variance, and everyone except one person in the photo is against this variance, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Ms. Lewis by the board? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello, is this Joan Priestley?
Yes.
This is Ziva calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Yeah, are you an individual or a representative of a group?
Oh, no, I'm an individual.
You'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. The call will be ended if there are no questions for you afterwards. Please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
Okay. My name is Joan Priestley, and I am an owner of property located at 13101 Genie Road. Um, I'm, I am testifying in opposition to this variance request. Um, I've just read the entire application, and I believe that the handwaving about the topography necessitating a variance is, uh, incorrect at best. The, um, the 35 lots that previously granted somehow has become 42. And the, the only reason for asking for this variance is because 42 lots are smaller than 35 lots on this parcel. So, um, the Jack Frost from the Rite of War, I think summed it up very well. He said, "It's just an effort to create more expensive houses on smaller lots, which will produce more crowded living conditions." I don't believe there's anything about the topography that necessitates this variance request. All we have to do is take up some lot lines and build houses of the same size, and presto, the lots, the, 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 the lot coverage is now the allowable 30 to 40%. So, um, there's, the, the lots can be built, uh, to the, the variant, the, I'm sorry, to the specified coverage standards. Um, the, the topography does not preclude any reasonable or even any use at all of these lots, and that is the legal standard that needs to be upheld. So because of that, uh, this variance request does not meet, uh, the standards that are clearly stated in 21.03.240, A, especially B, uh, which is that the denial of the variance would inc, would create an undue excessive hardship, or letter C, which is that this, the, the variance request does not do a self-imposed, um, source of, of the request. I, I fail to see how a variance that is based solely on the number of lots desired is anything but a self-imposed, they say pecuniary, meaning economic hardship, which is a, not a qualification for granting a variance. Um, I, I also, uh, they also state that, that architectural variability, day, more daylight, privacy, larger windows, a bigger garage and depth are part of their variance request. I have to ask, since when did those, uh, standards, uh, that all apply to structures and not the land, become a criteria for granting a variance request? Um, this does not meet the, the, the mandatory standard in Title 21, and it should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very nice, right at three minutes.
Was it?
Yeah.
It wasn't even rehearsed. I was-
Are there any questions by the board of Ms. Priestley? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Certainly. Thank you for the opportunity. Bye.
Bye.
Your call has been forwarded to-
This is Sarah.
Hi, Sarah, this is Ziva calling for your public testimony for case 2020-0054.
Um, hi, thank you.
Yeah, are you an individual or a representative of a group?
Um, I represent House District 22 in the state legislature. But I'm calling on behalf of myself tonight.
Okay, so you'll have three minutes for your public testimony, um, since you're calling on behalf of yourself. Um, your testimony will end after you provide your comment unless there are any questions from the board. Um, please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
Um, yeah, it's Sarah Rasmussen, and, um, I'm calling tonight not necessarily in opposition to the development. I think that it would be more reasonable to request, um, a number of the lots instead of the entire project. But my biggest concern tonight is the lack of transparency that I have heard expressed from many of my neighbors in the area. Um, I think it's concerning that we've put in so many developments in the area recently without having any traffic studies done on Sand Lake Road. Um, and I think that the amount of time people had to lay in on this was less than adequate for, um, such a big change to the area. I do appreciate the, the concept of having more accessory dwelling units in the market as it's something that my husband and myself have found to be lacking in the Sand Lake neighborhood. Um, but I also feel that we, we really do need a few options for bigger lots for new developments. So I would, um, I would ask that the board consider perhaps granting, um, a limited number of the lots to be approved for a variance and, and potentially not the entire development at this time. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Ms. Raps, Rasmussen by the board? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thanks.
Hi, Susan, this is Ziva calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Are you a representative of a group or an individual?
I'm an individual.
Perfect. You'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. The call will be ended if there are no questions for you after you provide your comment. Please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
My name is Susan Ritter. I live in Anchorage, and my testimony is as follows. The, the company, the organization that purchased the property to build the land on, uh, off of Sand Lake and, um, knew what they were getting into, and they should not be allowed to change the, uh, the process. They already knew that they were getting a land that was, uh, slightly not irregular. And I think this is just a standard operating procedure, purchase property and then go for another change of, uh, um, type of housing that they can put in there. So I oppose it. I think it should just be the property that they sold it as, or the number of houses that are supposed to be on it, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions of Mr. Ritter by the board? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Hello?
Hi, is this Henry Wilson?
It is.
This is Ziva calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Okay.
Are you calling as an individual or a representative of a group?
As an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Um, the call will be ended if there are no questions for you after you provide your comment. Please state your name for the record and then you can begin.
Uh, my name is Henry Wilson, and, uh, madam chair members of the board, I oppose the, uh, application for a variance. There's several issues that I would like to touch upon. The first, I think, is a threshold legal question. It was touched on by one of the board members. Um, I do not, I've looked at, um, the municipal code. I do not believe that a variance is authorized in this case under Title 21. Part of the developer's request involves, um, including accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Um, those were not allowed in, uh, single-family residential neighborhoods prior to 2018. Um, there were amendments to Title 21 which allowed for them, and those are now set out at, um, Section 21.05.070D. And one of those provisions expressly provides that the lot coverage, the principal dwelling unit and ADU combined may not exceed the maximum lot coverage allowed by the zoning district. And in this situation, that means 30%. Then further and, and more importantly, uh, there's another section near the end that provide, that addresses variances. And it says, quote, "No variances shall be granted from the standards and provisions of this section." So this is mandatory language. It doesn't say may, it doesn't say depending on the circumstances, it just says, "No variance shall be granted." And the provisions and standards include this limitation on lot coverage. So I think that is, um, a ground for summarily denying this petition. Uh, assuming for the sake of argument that the petitioner could get around that somehow. I don't think the other standards have been met. Um, particularly, the, the argument here seems to be that there's something exceptional or extraordinary about the physical characteristics of this property, uh, particularly with regard to the slope, and that's just not the case. I've been up there, walked the property, uh, as several, uh, board members have pointed out. Uh, if you look at the plat that's been submitted, only really the northeast corner of this approximately 10-acre tract has steep slopes on it. Um, and it's roughly seven or eight lots out of 42. Um, the planning department staff has described the property as flat, with steep slopes along the northeast section. Uh, it's just not anything, uh, that could fairly be characterized as exceptional or extraordinary, particularly there are other, there are plenty of other neighborhoods, uh, near here, and then also on the hillside that have, uh, every bit as much sloping terrain, if not more. So I don't think-
There's several issues that I would like to touch upon. The first, I think, is a threshold legal question. It was touched on by one of the Board members. I do not... I've looked at the municipal code. I do not believe that a variance is authorized in this case under Title 21. Part of the developer's request involves including accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Those were not allowed in single-family residential neighborhoods prior to 2018. There were amendments to Title 21 which allowed for them, and those are now set out at Section 21.05.070D. And one of those provisions expressly provides that the lot coverage of the principal dwelling unit and ADU combined may not exceed the maximum lot coverage allowed by the zoning district. In this situation, that means 30%. Then further and more importantly, there's another section near the end that provides that addresses variances. And it says, quote, "No variances shall be granted from the standards and provisions of this section." So this is mandatory language. It doesn't say may, it doesn't say depending on the circumstances, it just says no variance shall be granted. And the provisions and standards include the limitation on lot coverage. So I think that is a ground for summarily denying this petition. Assuming for the sake of argument that the petitioner could get around that somehow, I don't think the other standards have been met. Particularly, the argument here seems to be that there's something exceptional or extraordinary about the physical characteristics of this property, particularly with regard to the slope. And that's just not the case. I've been up there, walked the property. As several Board members have pointed out, if you look at the plat that's been submitted, only really the northeast corner of this approximately 10-acre tract has steep slopes on it. And it's roughly seven or eight lots out of 42. The planning department staff has described the property as flat, with steep slopes along the northeast section. It's just not anything that could fairly be characterized as exceptional or extraordinary. Particularly, there are plenty of other neighborhoods near here and then also on the hillside that have every bit as much sloping terrain, if not more. So I don't think that there's a petitioner...
Mr. Wilson, your time is up.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any questions of Mr. Wilson by the Board? Anyone at all? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Hi, is this Carol Ashlock?
Yes, this is she.
This is Ziba calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Right, thank you.
Are you an individual or a representative of a group?
No, I'm an individual.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your public testimony. The call will be ended if there are no questions for you from the Board. Please state your name for the record, and then you can begin.
Do I need to state my address as well, or just my name?
Just your name.
Okay, thank you. I'll hold.
You can state your name and then go ahead.
Oh, no?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Carol Ashlock. My testimony tonight is simple. The Sand Hill Development requires for dimensional variance, changing the allowable lot coverage of 30% to 40% to 50% should be denied. The variation is that they have chosen to build 42 houses on a small parcel, reportedly just under 10 acres. Easily, they can remove a few outlines and still build their planned big houses with code allowable lot coverage, which is already 30% to 40%. The question is, doesn't need at least letters C and B of the Cartier in Title 21.03.240? He creates an undue hardship. C, not a self-imposed condition, can be cured by removal of a few outlines. The developers need merely to apply themselves to easily and reasonably resolve this issue in accordance with the neighboring community in Title 21. Please try to get this variance tonight. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Are there any questions of Ms. Ashlock by the Board? Anyone at all? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
Hi, is this Filippa Page?
It is.
This is Ziba calling for your public testimony on case 2020-0054.
Okay.
Are you an individual or a representative of a group?
I am an individual. I own properties on both sides of Sand Lake.
Okay, you'll have three minutes to provide your testimony. Before you begin, please state your name, and then you can proceed.
My name is Filippa Page, and I'd like to comment. I have lived in the greater Sand Lake area almost 60 years, and I have lived off of the south side of Sand Lake, off of West 80th, for almost 30 years. The traffic that has been increased in parking, I can't see traffic, a lot of the traffic that has been increased on West 80th is due to the end of it use, where it is into the canal. And that's okay, most of the time the parking doesn't overflow all the way up the road or halfway up 80th. Sometimes it does. That's the parking in the street I'm referring to. Five duplexes went in mid-80th a couple of years ago, and the parking just for the two that face West 80th, even when their driveways are not full. And this is not at night parties. This is, I don't know what, but the parking that goes on along that side of 80th definitely is a traffic hazard, a safety and health hazard. Kids come riding out on bikes. Moose we have, which are fine. But this doesn't even get into snow clearing, which isn't a problem for me because I drive something that I don't count on it. I've lived out here long enough that I don't count on timely snow clearing. However, it does affect how you can get up and down your road when you have people parking in it and there are other traffic. The main thing is, I'm sorry, they are having significant money problems, and I realize the city wants to accommodate them. They have accommodated the whole Sand Lake area way too much in their planning and their building entirely. I have seen it over the last few years. The development is named Sand Hill. It wasn't a hill when they got it. A way that would not save in their pocketbook, but would save on their problem of the amount of the lot that they take up, which they were wanting to take up more of the lot, in other words, clear cut more of the lot, would be to cut the amount of parcels at about half, 21 parcels that have more room on their lots. Yes, it would not be significant money making for them. But we definitely have larger lots in this area. It is a nice area, and it has already been encumbered with a lot of past developments that are either on small lots, failing sewers, failing water. Well, that's another thing. I'm concerned with where they're going to get their water from.
Ms. Page?
Pardon me?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any questions of Ms. Page by the Board? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Okay, does the staff have any rebuttal?
Madam Chair, this is Sean. No.
Does the applicant have any rebuttal? You have about 30 seconds.
Hi, this is Jim McCollum, and I'm an attorney, and I am representing the applicant. So the point that I derive from all this is that, under 2103.240, if the physical condition of the land renders it difficult to develop, then you're entitled to a variance. It is not something that the developer took on. It is a factor of market forces and builders' willingness to buy lots that they can sell and meet the market. This is a constant problem in Anchorage. It's going to be so for the next 20 years as we add more people in a limited amount of space. And if we don't see that and provide for variances, we will not meet the motives and goals of the Anchorage 2020 Plan. These people will not be able to provide housing that's affordable to the residents in Anchorage. So meeting the market is not just making a lot of money, it is developing in a way that will happen as opposed to not happening. This does meet the requirement of the Code.
Mr. McCollum, your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the Board. May I have a positive motion, please?
Madam Chair, I have a questioner. Can I ask a question of the rebuttal?
Um...
This is Jonathan Lang. Can I ask a question of the petitioner's rebuttal?
Yes. Do you want to ask it of Ms. Yosimura, Mr. Marcot, or Mr. McCollum? Or just anyone?
Mr. McCollum specifically addressing his current statement.
Mr. McCollum, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lang.
To the Chair, Mr. McCollum, 2103.240, variances, purpose and scope, says in part, "It is not intended that variances be granted merely to remove inconveniences or financial burdens that the requirements of this title may impose on property owners in general." It sounds to me like everything you just said was that with larger lots, the property won't be developable.
That's the problem. You have two statements in that section of the Code, and it says it's not granted for inconveniences or financial difficulties. But if it's difficult to develop, and you can't develop, you can probably develop anything at a cost, but at some point, without variances, it's not feasible because the builders, and they're the people that are looking at these lots and that came up with this issue, it's governed that this cost is not going to be reasonable for the price point of the homes they want to sell. And that is a constant problem in Anchorage. It's why we have almost no inventory right now. So you have to reconcile those statements to say that this isn't just some trivial thing, or we're just wanting to make a bunch of extra money. We have to meet the market. Things don't sell if you don't meet the market. And this is an extraordinarily expensive piece of land. It is all slopes, some of it is side slopes, some of it is up and down slope. It has a unique set of problems, and so if this doesn't qualify for variance, I don't know what would.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lang, that I didn't see that you wanted to speak. Is that it for questions of the applicant? Okay. Now, can I have a positive motion? Ms. Iker?
Yes, ma'am. Case number 2020-0054, I move to approve variance from Anchorage Municipal Code, Table 21.06-1, Table of Dimensional Standards in Residential Districts A and C, 21.06-030B1A and A and C, 21.06.030B1B, to allow an increase in lot coverage from 30% maximum to 50% maximum in the R1 Single Family Residential zoning district, subject to conditions 1 through 5 from the Department of Recommendations.
And Mr. Lang seconds. Ms. Iker, would you speak to your motion?
Well, at this point in time, I don't intend to support my motion. I do agree with the findings that staff found in A that are partially met with regards to some of the lots in the proposed subdivision for the reasons that staff identified. Similarly, I find that in Standard B, the standard is partially met for the reasons that staff identified with regards to the topography on the steeper lot. With regards to C, I struggle with this one. I do think that the standard is only partially met. I understand that there are special conditions on some of the lots, but they could be mitigated by a different design or lot size. With regards to D, I do find that the standard is not with regards to the reasons that staff laid out in the packet. With regards to the standard E, I do not find that the standard is met because I don't think that it is in keeping with the intent of the Code. And Standard H, I believe that is met for the reasons that staff identified. Standard G, I believe that is met with the reasons that staff identified. Standard H, I do not believe that this has met with regards to the minimum variance required to make a reasonable use of the land. It is for the reason that we are being asked to grant a lot or a variance for an entire subdivision for which only a portion of the lots suffer from steep topography. And it was helpful to hear from the petitioner that some lots suffer from a 30-foot variance and some from a 14 to 60-foot variance. And I understand that the goal is to provide moderately priced housing with potentially ADUs, and that's an admirable goal, but the fix to this is a change to the Code and not a blanket variance with regards to the Code application. And I think that that would potentially be outside of the discretion of this Board.
Thank you. Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I concur with Ms. Iker, and I'd like to also say that the developer's being limited by the petitioner's own covenants to 7, 8 years, but they're asking for a blanket lot coverage increase. The development has seven or eight lots with extreme slopes, but the petitioner has not shown how increased lot coverage will address the slope issues. I'm also not comfortable with approving this variance without seeing a grading plan and without seeing a site plan that shows what 50% lot coverage looks like. I disagree with the staff findings, but I concur with Mr. Hale that the hardship is self-imposed because larger lots would alleviate the need for a lot coverage variance. And the petitioner says they talked about affordable housing and the need to meet a $500,000 price point, which just doesn't reconcile in my head. So I do not intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hale?
To the Chair, Dave Hale, I agree with Ms. Iker and Mr. Lang. The issue that I have is, of course, with C, I do believe that it's self-imposed. I think they could change the lot size and mitigate some of the topographic issues. I agree with Ms. Iker, which she said that E, you know, that's going to change the character of the properties around it, for sure. And the minimum variance, A, if they made the lots a little bit bigger, I think we wouldn't even be talking about this, and I think they could develop it, and it'd probably be fine. So I'm going to have a good time recording this as well.
Any other discussion by the Board? Seeing none, I'll comment. I also am not going to support the motion. We're being asked to approve a blanket variance, and the standards that were put forth do not apply for all the lots. For example, Lot 22 is essentially flat, and Lot 13 is very, very steep. For Standard A, that the exceptional topography does not apply to all the lots.
Ms. Savina?
No.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next case, which is also a variance case, Case 2020-0061, with the petitioner Anna Nowak. And she was online. Is she still there? Yeah, yeah, okay. Okay. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Chair. On March 24th, a total of 116 public hearing notices were mailed. The neighbor closest to the side yard encroachment provided a letter of support for the variances. Two other public comments were received in writing in support of the variances. The Birchwood Community Council did not provide any comments.
Is there any objection by the board to the sufficiency of notice in this case? Seeing none, will the staff please present the case?
Yes. This is a request for a variance from the dimensional standards for Chugiak Eagle River to allow a 4.3-foot encroachment into the front setback and a 21.6-foot encroachment into the side setback along the east property boundary. The CER6 district requires 25 feet setbacks from both the front and the side property lines. Eaves for homes are permitted to encroach a maximum of two feet into required setbacks, and this house has eaves both on the front and on the side. However, when a structure already encroaches into the setback, then the eaves are not allowed to encroach still further. The variance request or the description in the staff report includes the eaves as A little bit of history about the property. The original single-story house, carport and garage were all built in 1974. The first zoning regulations came into effect in this area in 1985. The property owner established non-conforming rights for the front and side setback encroachments with the letter dated from 1994 in accordance with Chapter 12 of Title 21, the Non-Conforming Structures section. In 1997, the property owner was issued, applied for and was issued, a land use permit to construct a second-story addition to the home. The permit, Permit 97-E-337, was issued in error by the Municipal Building Safety Division because the building addition of a second floor increased the encroachment of the house into the front setback and voided non-conforming rights that the house enjoyed. While not the fault of the property owner, they are still responsible for resolving this encroachment into the front yard through this request for a zoning dimensional variance. This encroachment would result in the need to move a significant portion of the home in order to meet the required 25-foot setback. Additionally, in 2013, the property owner improved the existing carport and garage without a permit. The improvements that were made were to change the carport's roof and put new siding on the garage to match the house improvements that were made. These improvements did not increase the encroachment closer to the east property line, the side setback, but they voided the non-conforming rights for the side setback. They may have thought, the property owner may have thought that they could do this under the existing permit that was still open. Permit 97-E-337 for the second-story house addition never received a certificate of completion, and the owner passed away suddenly a few years ago. The need for the variances was discovered by the widow, the property owner, when she applied for a permit to replace the onsite septic system on the property. So that's a little bit of the background on how we got here. In regards to approval criteria A, the planning department finds that it's partially met. While the lot size is 1 and 1/4 acres, which exceeds the minimum lot area in the CER6 district by 1/4 of an acre, and there are no streams or wetlands on the property. Still, the slope of the lot is generally flat, but there is some topography on the northwest corner of the lot. The flattest part of the lot is where the house is constructed, and there is a depression in the land that slopes down to the road on the west side of the lot, away from, you know, on the opposite side of the lot from where the house is built, which is on the east side. Also, the property is served by a private well and an onsite septic system, which are site constraints. Beverly Avenue is a dead-end road that serves only seven lots. It's a short road with very few homes. The edge of the built road is 42 feet from the house. The house does not meet the required setback from the front property line, but it is more than 25 feet from the built street. And the street is not likely to be widened because it functions well for the limited number of vehicles that use it, because there's a small number of homes on that street, and it can't be extended, the street can't. The most affected neighbor by this encroachment is the lot to the east. There's 102 feet separating the two homes. While the carport and garage on the subject parcel do not meet the required setback of 25 feet from the property line, they still maintain a separation distance which is greater than 50 feet, if you were to consider 25 feet setback on both lots. Also, the space between the homes is densely forested with mature trees and vegetation. Approval criteria B is partially met. The CER6 district requires 25-foot setback from the front and side property lines. The setback does not create an undue hardship upon the property owner since there is ample space between, ample space elsewhere on the property to legally locate the structure. While inconvenient, the structure could be built on the west side of the house outside the 25-foot setback. However, the original house, carport and garage were all, were built 11 years before zoning came into effect in the area. And the logical place for improvements to the carport and garage were in the place where it already existed, and to turn the single-story home into a two-story home was also logical and not an obvious cause for encroachment. Certainly, these structures are common rights of enjoyment for residential properties. The house in the neighborhood, the houses on this street have a very rural character and are made up of primarily very old housing stock. There's a wide variety of different housing styles in this street, from split level to ranch-style homes and self-built cabins. The petition site is the newest house and the most modern style of housing construction on Beverly Avenue, improving the average of the neighborhood substantially. Approval criteria C, the hardship is not self-imposed. This is partially met. Other lots in the area have similar physical, natural physical features to this property. But the encroachments are a result of a permit that was issued in error to construct a second story onto the house, and the improvements made to the carport and garage without a permit are minimal. The original house, carport and garage were built prior to zoning. Since the structures no longer enjoy non-conforming rights, the owner would need to remove all the encroachments and rebuild on the west side of the lot. This means the original house, carport and garage, which were legally conforming, would need to be moved. Approval criteria D is met. The standard assumes the violation will not be injurious to the neighbors. There have been no objection from neighbors and actually support from the most affected neighbor. Approval criteria E is met. Requested variance is dimensional and would not allow a prohibited use. Approval criteria F is met. There's no identified health, safety issues. The owner is seeking relief from a side setback, from a side setback, front setback requirement in order to keep an existing house and garage, house, carport and garage. Approval criteria G is met. This is not related to ADA or accessibility or reasonable accommodation. Approval criteria H is partially met. The house, carport and garage encroach 17.2% into the front setback and 86.4% into the side setback. The front and side setback encroachments preexisted zoning in the area. The original house, garage and carport were built 11 years before the property was zoned CER6. The legal non-conforming rights were lost when the second-story addition was made and the carport and garage improvements with the siding and the pitched roof. For this property, the encroachments are the minimum variance that would make it possible for reasonable use of the land because all of the structures would need to be relocated somewhere else on the property, which is, you know, not very realistic. The department finds that approval criteria A, B, C, and H are only partially met, and therefore, we must recommend denial of variance. If however, after the public hearing, the board finds that all eight approval criteria are substantially met, then the approval would be subject to conditions 1 and 2 on Page 6 of your packet. They're standard conditions of approval. There's one typo in the first condition of approval. It states that the encroachment variance is for 22.5 feet. It's actually 21.6 feet. So throughout the document, the staff report has the numbers correct, except for in this one spot, so it should be 21.6 feet there. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the petitioners on the line as well.
Are there any questions of staff by the board? Seeing none, the applicant is on the line.
To the Chair, my name is Anna Nowak, and I am the applicant and the owner.
Could you spell your name for the record, please?
My name is Anna Nowak, and I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, thank you. Please present your case.
To the Chair, to the board, my name is Anna Nowak, and I'm the owner of the property. First of all, I would like to thank the board for hearing my case, and I especially would like to thank the planning staff, especially Francis and David, for guiding me throughout this process. I would like to take a moment to address the report from the planning staff. In regards to finding A, there clearly exists a depression on the northwest corner, and that's why the house was constructed where it is now. And as the report says, that all of the original structures were constructed and built in 1974. In addition, excuse me, the house is on a private well and septic, and the location of both provided for different constraints, that's why the house was placed where it's standing now. And while the distance between the affected neighbor on the east side is less than 25 feet, there is over 100 feet between my house and their house. And again, that very same separation existed since 1974. Nothing has changed, and that was all already grandfathered. And the neighbor affected provided a letter of support that is attached to this report. So as such, I do feel that that standard is fully met. Also, the finding B, all structures, like I have mentioned already, were built in 1974, and there was improvement done. But if we were to place the house in a different space, we would physically have to move all of the structures that were already there, of the carport, the garage, and they were already grandfathered. So as such, I also feel that the standard B is met. In regards to finding under number C, my husband, my late husband, applied for a building permit in 1997, and the permit was issued. And we have complied to the permit, and we were acting in a good faith to make sure that nothing will be violated. I would like to mention that both my husband and I, we always follow the rules. I worked in the municipality for over 12 years and over eight years for the state of Alaska. My husband also worked for the municipality for 15, over 50 years, until he suddenly passed away. So since he passed away, I was trying to make sure that I had all of the outstanding stuff completed. And when I last year in October put me in septic, I was doing the paperwork with the municipality, and I found out that there is still an open permit. And that's when I was informed that I need this variance. So to make sure that I do follow the rules, I had immediately contacted the planning department and started the process. So I feel that since the permit was issued by the municipality, this standard is also met, as the original structures were not moved and they were already grandfathered. And lastly, in regards to finding H, again, I would like to emphasize that the permit was issued and the structures were not moved since 1974, and they were already grandfathered. Removing the existing structures now would cost an extreme hardship that unfortunately I cannot afford. And knowing that the permit was issued and existing structures were already grandfathered, I also feel that that standard was met. So thank you for hearing my case, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nowak. Are there any questions of the applicant by the board? Seeing none, are there any questions of the applicant by the staff?
No, Chair, thank you.
Then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any? Okay, there's no one that requested to speak, so there isn't any public testimony. So we will ask the applicant for rebuttal. You have almost five minutes if you need to say anything in addition. There's nothing to rebut, but...
To the Chair, thank you for the opportunity. I would like to stay with my original testimony. And again, all the existing structures were already there. Nothing was moved. We were both acting in a good faith, and I appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, the public hearing is closed, and the matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? May I have a positive motion, please?
Unmute, unmute your phone, Monica.
Yeah, sorry, I was waiting to see if we needed a second. I move to approve case 2020-0061 based on staff conditions on page six of the staff report with the one change of the fee being 22.5 to 21.5.
And Ms. Hickock, seconds. So would you speak to your motion, Ms. Emmerton?
Yes, thank you. I intend to support my motion. I agree with the petitioner that the findings are met, they are not partially met. They have, the petition, like the landowners have done everything correctly filing for permits. And so I, like if we go to finding A, the exceptional circumstances in this case are the fact that the, the property was built prior to any code enforcement, it has not been moved and they did apply for permits when they did the upgrades. As far as B, I also, that one is also partially met and I'm going to use the same, this is, this would create an incredible undue hardship on the property owner to actually have to move her buildings to come into compliance. So I, in my opinion, that one is fully met. And standard C, I would also say that this one is fully met, this was not self-imposed. She, they built prior to these restrictions and then they had applied for permits. The rest, I agree with staff that they are met until we get to H. And then, again, I find that this one is met due to the fact that they make the most sense for where they need to go, they were built prior to code and moving them at this point when they filed for the permits along the way doesn't, doesn't seem to make any sense. So I do intend to support my motion.
Thank you. Ms. Hickock?
I also intend to support my motion. I echo Board Member Emmerton's assertion that all the standards are fully met, not just partially met. And, that's all, thank you.
Discussion from any other board member? Seeing none, I guess we'll vote.
Ms. Iker?
Yes.
Chair McKay?
Yes.
Ms. Hickock?
Yes.
Mr. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Emmerton?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Ms. Savina?
Yes.
Eight yeses, it's unanimous and the variance has been granted. Okay, with that, we'll move on to the next case, which is an appeal and it's, has a different procedure. So for the appeal procedure, Chair shall introduce the appeal and explain the procedure to be followed. The board shall hear and rule on any objections to sufficiency of notice. The Chair shall call upon all persons intending to testify on the appeal before the board to execute the oath, which I will do individually, not as, as a group because we can't, we can't see you. The staff will present a brief outline of the appeal, then the applicant's turn. The applicant has a total of 10 minutes to present their case and may reserve time for rebuttal. Throughout the proceedings, the burden of proof rests upon the appellant to convince the board by a preponderance of evidence that the appeal should be granted. The board members and the staff may then ask questions of the appellant through the Chair. The staff shall then give its full presentation. On the, on the conclusion of the staff presentation, the board members and the appellant may then direct questions to the staff through the Chair. The hearing shall then open for public testimony. Representatives of groups have five minutes, individuals have three minutes. Time is kept by the secretary and she will let you know, or I will let you know, when your time is up. All persons who testify may be questioned by board members, the staff and the applicant. On the conclusion of the public testimony, the staff, followed by the appellant, shall have the right of rebuttal and the Chair will close the public hearing and then the matter will rest with the board. Every final decision of the board shall clearly state on its face that it is a final decision with respect to all issues involved in the case and that the parties have 30 days from the date of mailing or other distribution of the decision to file an appeal with Superior So with that, this is case number 20200077 and the name of the appellant is Roseanne Gray. And I think we have the petitioner's representative on board. Will the staff please describe the notice given in this case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In accordance with section 2103050B5B, the appellant was sent notice on April 22nd, 2020.
Any objections to the sufficiency of notice in this case by the board? Seeing none. Do I swear in staff? So I should, okay. So, staff, do you solemnly swear to affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Then would you please give us a brief outline of the appeal?
This is an appeal of a non-conforming determination for Township 13 North, Range 4 West, Section 25, Parcels 1 through 40 with a street address of 3201 Spinnard Road. The appeal is for a determination that granted non-conforming rights to this property.
Thank you. Okay, and now the appellate, or the appellate's representative, so the appellate's representative, Ann Helzer, is that correct?
Yes, it is, Madam.
And you are a sworn officer of the Court?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so please present your case.
Thank you. Also present today is Roseanne Gray and her husband Bob Gray on the line. I do appreciate the opportunity to present this case to you. This case is a little unusual, as you've probably discerned, in that we are contesting the granting of non-contested, of non-conforming status because the individual who had requested it did not have the authority to request it. So really what we're asking for is a suspension of the determination until we can get the issue of the authority and the true owner of the property in question, which is right now in the very embroiled battle of the Court. So what we have here is a very, very highly contested probate battle. Richard McCready is a former employee of Mrs. Peterson who owned the property on Spinnard Road and two other adjacent properties. It's our position that Mr. McCready, who does have a felonious record, unduly influenced Mrs. Peterson and ultimately became the sole beneficiary of her estate. The probate is highly contested and the most important property in the estate is the Spinnard Road property, which includes three, two adjacent properties to the property that's in question right now with the non-conforming status. You'll see in the materials that the Court, very early on, issued an injunction and, and actually there are three of them. They are all a little bit different, but the gist of all of them is that there shall be no encumbrances upon the property. Mr. McCready did not have the authority to request this determination, which would, which would essentially create a change in the value or use of the property. The city's, city attorney has defined an encumbrance very narrowly. We are suggesting that the definition of an encumbrance is anything that causes, has an effect on the value or use of the property. In this case, the value and the use of any estate property would be at issue. So the non-conforming status would be a change in use of the property. Also, the adjacent properties would also be affected potentially in their value because of this non-conforming status. So essentially, what we're trying to accomplish here is asking the city to allow the Court to make the decision on who can make changes or determinations or seek determinations on the property and to allow the Court, which does have exclusive jurisdiction over this issue. Mr. McCready, at one time, was a manager of this property. That has been, he has been removed from that position and the, the Court is going to appoint a neutral trustee in potentially a matter of weeks to take over this situation, which has become very, very contentious. There are approximately 45 pending motions in the Kenai Court at the moment and it just, it would be safe for the city to stay out of this entirely until we can get a handle on whether this change in the property is going to ultimately be beneficial or not or if it's going to have a negative effect on any adjacent properties, whether it would prohibit anyone from participating in the new positive changes to the Spinnard area that have been proposed by the mayor. All of these things are, are sort of out there as possibilities and with, with a determination reached by a person without the authority to do that, prior to the Court's determination that he has that authority, should not be countenanced by this body. And so we respectfully ask that the board simply suspend their decision on whether there should be a non-conforming status on this property until we can get a handle on who has the authority to seek those types of determinations. And at this time, Mr. McCready clearly does not have that authority and that is made clear in three orders and a very, very near decision on, on that issue. It, one other thing to mention is that the Spinnard Road property really is a key piece of real estate, the three properties are key in this battle and that's been brought up in the court orders as well. And so really, it's totally inappropriate and, and improper for Mr. McCready to have sought this, this determination. Also, I have personally spoken to potential buyers of this property, so we understand that there is an anticipatory breach of the court order that is hanging out there. The proper owners should have plenary authority to decide what they're going to do with all three parcels and not allow a contested person who has been removed from that authority to make any decisions whatsoever affecting the use or value, which is the true definition of an encumbrance. An encumbrance does not mean that it's a lien or, that's a very limited definition of encumbrance. Encumbrance includes a number of changes to the value, any change to the value and status of the property. So we respectfully ask that the board simply suspend their decisions to allow the Courts to, to handle what the Courts are embroiled in the middle of at this time so that we can reach these decisions and the true owner or the trustee can make them and complete those decisions. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. You have two minutes and 30 something for rebuttal.
Okay. I think, I think that's about it. We're trying to preserve the, the time, and I realize you have all been sitting here for quite a while, but we're trying to preserve the property as best as we can under the circumstances. It's highly contested and I, I will reserve my time for any questions that may come up on the issue.
Okay, you will not be charged time for questions. You have more than two minutes for rebuttal. Okay, are there any questions of the appellant by, by the board members? Mr. Smythe?
Yeah, thank you, through Madam Chair. The discussion of Mr. McCready applying for the verification of non-conforming status, was that done while he was an employee of the company managing the property?
No, not to my knowledge, no. This all occurred in furtherance of achieving a sale of that one parcel, which is why it's particularly disturbing because we have been in court since roughly June of last year with a petition and so we, the answer to the question is no, not to my knowledge. And it wouldn't matter anyway and that's because the Court has put a stop to anything that could encumber the property. And an encumbrance, as I said, is broadly defined. It can include a mortgage, it can include a lien, but broad definition of an encumbrance is anything that would change the value or use of that property. That's the legal definition of an encumbrance.
Thank you. And that leads to my next question then, again, through the Chair. What are the encumbrances when I read through the non-conforming use determination, the status? Doesn't, I don't see any required change? I was just curious what the concern was.
So, this determination would be in furtherance of a sale and a sale would be an active violation of a court order. It was sought for the purpose of an anticipatory breach of the court order. But that aside, we haven't even, we're not even going there, this is a strictly procedural situation. The procedural situation is that a person applied for a status of property who did not have the authority, who is not the owner of the, of the property. And in that time period, a Court issued three injunctions preventing that individual from doing anything that could encumber either that particular piece of property but also the two adjacent properties that are there. We are not, we are, we have not even had the opportunity to evaluate the repercussions of this non-conforming status determination. When we learned of it, it was because it was recorded against the property. There's a notice of lis pendens in the property as well. So there was, if, if anything, a person who has a court order injunction would, would let you know that. let you know that. And so what I'm doing by this appearance here tonight is to advise you that this is in the jurisdictional control of the court. And the court has determined whether it's an encumbrance, in terms of if it's a benefit or a detriment, is, is, is irrelevant. What is important is that the person who is applying for that status has no authority to do that. And I'm not suggesting that later down the road, that the rightful owner cannot seek this determination, or that you can suspend the determination in order for the court to resolve this issue. And it's my commitment to you, as serving members of the community, to inform you that that status has changed. But as of right now, it's highly contested, and it's, it's a question that the court needs to consider before the city gets involved. And that's, that's our position. I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you. No more questions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Helsner?
Yes.
There, it's, it's my understanding, and, and there's a statement that's read through most of our, our variance applications, that says the Supreme Court has decided that zoning is not an encumbrance upon a property. And it, it doesn't matter who would ask for this, but a nonconforming determination is just establishing the status of a property, and, and it isn't, isn't an encumbrance. It, it just is stating that it is what it is as far as the zoning rules apply.
Okay. I, I can address the question. I am not familiar with the Supreme Court case you're discussing, but your own requirements as a board require that the person seeking the determination have the authority. I understand that a manager can be a person, can be a person on a very limited and narrowly tailored scale to apply for a determination. But what I'm informing you of is that three court orders have been issued. One that specifically mentions the Spinard Road property in a highly contested probate within the jurisdiction of the court. And I'm informing the city that there has been a determination that Mr. McCready cannot act whatsoever on behalf of the estate of Janet Peterson. And that would override even a limited definition of an encumbrance.
Thank you. I'm, I've got one other question.
Sure.
On page fifteen of the, the packet that we were given, there's an email from Sonny Calhoun to you, and she lists in there that for the State of Alaska Division of Corporations, Mr. McCready is listed as a corporate manager. So it sounds to me like Ms. Calhoun did her due diligence. It wasn't just a random person off the street, and according to state records, at the time, it was someone that was authorized to ask for this determination. Is, I, I guess my question to you would be timeline. If, if he had been removed and all these actions had taken place, why weren't the state corporate records updated to reflect through the courts that he was not allowed to act on behalf of the corporation?
Well, those will be quickly changed in due course. There has not been time to, to, to make these changes retroactively. What I will say is that you, you are correct, that he is named on those records, but there is a court order, and the court order would override anything that is out there. And essentially, I'm saying that we're in a different sort of a place. We're in a jurisdictional place, which is the court. And the court needs to decide who has the authority to request these things, who has the authority to make these changes, because it's that person who can properly determine whether this would be beneficial to the estate, whether this would be beneficial to, to, for one reason over another. I know that my clients, who are the children of Janet Peterson, the decedent, are very actively, one of them worked, her husband worked for the city for many years, he's on the line. They're very interested in creating, turning this property into a legacy property within the, the, the positive plan for Spinard that's just on the threshold of coming to life, with some third party with no authority, or authority that has been cut off by the court. That should not, that should not be consideration. What I'll say is, I'm not suggesting that there can't be a nonconforming status sometime in the very near future. I'm simply asking the board for the time to work these issues out. We'd like to be able to suspend any decisions regarding this property because of the court orders until the court can adequately address the issues and they can be handled there. At the very earliest time, we can come back to you and we can, we can have this conversation again. So I'm just asking for that, that, that time period so that we can get back to this and, and move forward for the best interest of the property and of Spinard area.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Hale, you have a, you have a question of staff?
I do. Through the chair, it sounds like this is being litigated through other channels, and I'm not sure I'd really be comfortable making a decision at this point. I'm wondering how we can maybe postpone this. It doesn't seem like there's any urgency in making a decision on this right now with all the parties involved. How do we, how do we just put this on hold for a while?
Through the chair, Mr. Hale, I, I don't know if that question was being directed at staff, but I, I would like to give staff the opportunity to make a presentation before questions are, are posed to them.
Okay with you, Mr. Hale?
I agree, yeah, thank.
Are there any other questions of the appellant by the board member? Seeing none. Staff is next up. Would you please present your case?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Planning Department recommends denial of this appeal for three reasons. First, Anchorage Municipal Code, Section 2103050 BK, lists items the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals may hear. Section K of that subsection indicates the board shall hear appeals for denial of a verification of legal nonconforming status. The verification of nonconforming status for this site found that the property has existing nonconforming rights for building encroachments and the lack of required characteristics of use such as sidewalks, landscaping, parking, and other building design standards. There was no denial of legal nonconforming status in this determination. Second, the applicant for, the application for nonconforming determination was accepted by the Land Use Review Office on February 6th of 2020. The application was submitted by Mr. Richard McCready on behalf of Peterson Rentals LLC. At the time we received the application, the State of Alaska Division of Corporations listed Richard McCready as manager for Peterson Rentals Corporation. Pages seven through eleven of your packet is a court order relative to this property. On page ten of your packet, item number five, it states, and I will read directly from that court document, "The injunction which entered 10/30/2019 remains in effect, however, Mr. McCready may continue to manage the LLC and pay normal business expenses, insurance, taxes, maintenance, and the like until the trustee is set in place." Lastly, a recognition of legal nonconforming status is not an encumbrance on a property. The opinion from our municipal legal department has confirmed that it is simply an interpretation of Title 21 as it applies to a particular property. A nonconforming determination does not grant or remove rights. It only recognizes the status of the property as it already exists at the time of the determination. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Mr. Hale?
Yeah.
Do you still have a question?
I don't. I think I'm good.
Are there any other questions of staff by the board members? Okay, seeing none. Then the case is open for public testimony. Was there any? Okay, secretary indicates that no one has signed up to testify. So there is no public testimony. And does the staff have any rebuttal?
No, thank you.
Does the appellant have any rebuttal?
I do, Madam, if I can have an opportunity to respond to some of the points made by the staff.
And this is Ms. Helsner?
Yes, it is.
Okay, go ahead.
So the first issue is that the, and we've, we've made this clear, he did not have authority to request the determination at the time the determination was requested. That's number one. Number two, the court order that you've mentioned indicates that Richard McCready can pay bills, insurance, taxes, that type of thing, and that was a purely practical response from the court until a trustee was appointed as part of the LLC, which is the paragraph just prior to the paragraph that you've read. You can also see that he's been removed from any authority to act on part of the property. An encumbrance is absolutely, or a sale of a property, or any change in the status of the Spinard property, or the adjacent properties, or any estate properties. I, I would like to appeal to the board on a purely practical level. This is contested. In any contested situation, for the city to make a determination on who a manager is and who is not, and what the definitions are, what the court thinks, or what the court was trying to accomplish in this very, very interim situation would be, would be respectfully, it would be unwise, because these decisions, we're having a trustee appointed, it's just, it hasn't happened before this meeting took place. And it is going to happen, and at the very earliest time that we can get somebody in there to manage this prior to a jury trial, which is taking place in September of 2020, just, just months away, we will have an owner of that property, and prior to that, we will have a trustee. What is clear from three orders is that Mr. McCready does not have the authority to alter that property, or to seek a use determination, or a value determination, or to sell that property, or to facilitate the sale of a property, or to make arrangements in anticipatory breach of a court order. All of those things are strictly prohibited. So I would respectfully ask you to simply suspend any decisions. The board has the discretion
Ms. Helsner.
Okay.
Your time is up.
Okay. The discretion to decide.
Okay. So there is a question from Ms. Sabina. I don't know. Jackie, are you muted? Did you have a question?
Yes, sorry, thank you. So you continue to say that he did not have authority?
Yes.
But at that time, the tax record showed that he did have authority. So does he, does he, does he still have authority? Or has he been removed?
No, he has been removed, and that's clear from the last order. They are, they are entertaining a trustee to be appointed for the LLC, and that is Peterson Rentals LLC, okay? So he did not have authority because the court issued an injunction on all estate property. Whether the tax records were changed or reflective of that period, that's, this all happened, and it's not material, because the court order is what we must go by. And that's where we are, and injunction is just that, an order of
So the court order, the court order was before?
Did you say this February 2020? Is that, as I understand it? I couldn't hear very well. But yes, he does not, he did not have the authority to seek that determination. Even if I went and sought to sell something, okay, and I secured a buyer, but then subsequent to that, a court order comes out and says, "I'm sorry, but you've been removed from your authority, or you no longer have the ability to act on behalf of the estate," right? I would be curtailed from taking any further action as a result of that court order. It is immaterial that I remain on a tax record, or, or I have my name on something. I, as a fiduciary, as a person, as a representative, as an individual, if a court tells me, "You are not permitted to do something," I must follow that direction. And like I said, I am not suggesting that this was a, that the, that didn't, the determination should not at some point go into effect. I'm simply saying that this is not the appropriate time because of such a contested battle that is current in the proceedings and within the 100% jurisdiction of the Kenai Court. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Lang.
Through the chair, I guess this, this question is two-part, and it's for, for staff and for the petitioners' representatives. You're not asking us to actually overrule the, the determination? You're asking us just to put a temporary hold on it?
Would, do you, would you like me to answer that, or should staff?
Yes, and then, and then my, my next question would be to staff, is, is putting a hold on this nonconforming determination something that we can actually do through this action?
Through the chair, I believe this action only applies to, I, I, I mean, the way I read this section in code is that the Zoning Board of Examiners and Appeals is allowed to make decisions on appeals for denial of verification of legal nonconforming status. This determination, putting it on hold, it doesn't change anything. These rights that have been recognized through this determination exist whether this determination is written or not written. It has been written, it has been recorded, and I'm not sure what putting it on hold would mean. It's been recorded with the state. We would have to rescind that recording. It, it still wouldn't change the status of the property.
Thank you. Just, so just to clarify, all we can act on is either overruling the nonconforming determination or upholding the nonconforming determination?
Through the chair, Mr. Lang, what you're being asked to do is either direct the Planning Department to record a, a document rescinding recognition of the nonconforming rights, or denying the appeal and allowing the nonconforming, the recorded nonconforming rights to continue to, to exist.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Smythe.
If I may, I would, would address that as well. When I was coming into this hearing, I, I didn't necessarily seek to rescind the noncon
When I was coming into this hearing, I, I didn't necessarily seek to rescind the nonconforming status as much as to ask the board to suspend the effect of the nonconforming determination. In the event that that is necessary, then we would be seeking to rescind the determination until we can resolve the issue of who should be seeking this, and what effect it would have on the overall property of the estate, including the adjacent lots that are on that Spinard Road area, and the actual property. And so, if that's the case, my understanding, I, I serve on a board as well, a volunteer board myself as Chair, and I know that these administrative boards have the discretion to say, "We're going to address this at the next meeting," or "We're going to put this on hold for, for another time." My understanding is the board can resolve to do that. I didn't come prepared for that conversation, but I would ask that because this court order is in effect, and because it is unequivocal that there is no authority to change the use or value of the property, any property of the estate.
Ms. Helsner?
Or the status.
Ms. Helsner?
But a determination, one way or the other, would, would not be appropriate, and would likely be in violation of, of any court orders that are currently in place.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments by the board at this point? No, I think, didn't, Mr. Smythe, did you have something you wanted to say, or did you say it?
I did, please, and just a clarification from staff, if I could. My understanding is their, their research shows they followed exactly what they were supposed to do, they've checked, they've, this has come out, and I, and I want to just confirm that. And then, the other, the second is that for the board to consider, as far as I understand, is a nonconforming use determination is not required for any sale. So by suspending this, we in no way, that I know of, encumber further. I, I believe if we're being asked to appeal this, we're gonna have to vote on appealing this. That's what our, that's what we're gonna be asked to do, and I don't understand how we have the right to do that, and I would recognize, or I would also ask, for clarification, if the court's jurisdiction over this will happen at a separate time, the genie's out of the bottle. The nonconforming use has been, as staff said, it's been printed and recorded. I don't understand what potential gain this is for us to get involved any further than what our scope is.
Wait, wait, no, no. That was not directed to you, Ms. Helsner, it was directed to staff.
Sorry about that.
Through the Chair, if I, if I understand the question correctly, yes. Land Use Review did diligence in determining that Mr. McCready had the right to apply for this determination at the time the determination was applied for. He is still listed as manager of Peterson Rentals LLC on the State Department of Corporations. The separate court case is a civil action that we, as, you know, Land Use Review would not get involved in, and would not know about at the time that this application was made. So, we accepted the application. And I don't remember the second part of this question, I'm sorry, can you restate it?
Mr. Hale?
Thank you, through the Chair. It sounds like we've got a recorded document, and we're looking at, is the best course of action here, my question to staff, is to do nothing?
That is the recommendation of staff. By denying the appeal, we do nothing. The nonconforming determination stands as it is, and, which, it, it, it remains recorded, it remains on the property record, it doesn't change the status of the property, it doesn't have anything to do with sale, or any other things with the property, it simply recognizes rights that already exist on the property.
May I respond to staff at this time?
Your, your time is up. Okay, so, public hearing is closed, the matter rests with the board.
Do I, do I not have an opportunity to respond to the question?
Um, your.
I haven't responded to the gentleman's question.
Well, the gentleman's question was directed to staff.
So there's no opportunity for a response?
Correct.
A rebuttal?
Your time for rebuttal has expired. Public hearing is closed, matter rests with the board. May I have a positive motion, please? Wait, 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 okay, we do have a motion from Ms. Iker, and Ms. Hickock has a question of staff. So we'll take Ms. Hickock's question.
Through the Chair, staff, so if we were to approve the appeal, then the determination of nonconformant would be rescinded, and the, and the appellant is requesting such action because the, the court order has stated that no action be taken, and that the municipality by recording the nonconforming determination was in violation of the court order?
If you were to grant the appeal, in effect, that is what you are saying. However, we disagree, obviously, with that. Specifically, as I mentioned before, if you look at page 10 of the court order, the first sentence is, however, I'm sorry, the second, the part of the sentence, however, Mr. McCready may continue to manage the LLC, and, so it is our stance that Mr. McCready still has the ability to manage the LLC, which gives him the authority to apply for the nonconforming determination.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Ms. Hickock?
Yes.
Yes.
So, did the municipal attorney review this order appointing guardian from February?
Yes, Quincy Arms did review and this court order.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, Ms. Iker, your motion?
Thank you. In case number 2020-0077, I move to deny the request for appeal for nonconforming determination for T13N4RW, Section 25.
Stephanie?
Parcel 1-40, Street Address 32-01.
Ms. Iker, has to be a positive motion, you can't deny. You have.
Oh, sorry.
You have to read it in the.
Motion to approve.
Yes.
Thank you for the reminder, Madam Chair.
So could you restate the motion, please?
Move to approve the appeal of nonconforming determination in T13M for RW, Section 25, Parcel 1-40, Street Address 32-01, Spinard Road, and this is in case number 2020-0077.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lang, seconds. Ms. Iker, would you speak to your motion, please?
Yes. So, I concur with the findings 1 through 3 as laid out in the staff packet. First and foremost, it is a parent authority that was relied upon by staff and the municipality when we determined who could properly support this request for a nonconforming status. Finding number two is further bolstered by the attorney's opinion in reviewing the court documents, but it's simply an interpretation of the zoning code, and doesn't encumber the property in any detrimental manner. And then finding number three, I concur with staff's recommendation that to deny the verification of a legal nonconforming status in this section is not a proper application of, of this code. So for those reasons, I do not plan to support my motion.
Mr. Lang?
Through the Chair, thank you. I agree with Ms. Iker's statements on all points, and I also, I'd love to be able to put this on hold, but we don't have a mechanism for that, so I will not be supporting the motion.
Any other discussion by board members? Anybody else wanna chime in? Seeing none, we will vote.
Ms. Iker?
Nay.
Chair McKay?
No.
Ms. Hickock?
Nay.
Mr. Hale?
No.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
Ms. Emmerton?
No.
Mr. Lang?
No.
Ms. Savina?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, eight no votes, and so the appeal has not been granted. And that is the end of public hearings. So we'll move on. We reordered the agenda, and we are now to, whatever they call that, election of officers. Nomination for Chair?
Is the current chair willing to serve another term?
Oh, God. If nobody else wants it, I, I will, but I would prefer to relinquish the gavel. Anybody else? Anybody else wanna take over the hammer?
If he's not, I nominate myself?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, Lori wants to know, who made the, the motion for, who asked me?
Oh, Ms. Hickock.
Okay. And somebody else? Was there a second?
I'll second Ms. Hickock. This is Stephanie Iker.
With Tanya, with Tanya as, as Chair? Is that what you seconded?
Yeah, I think Ms. Hickock nominated herself.
Oh.
She needs a second.
Okay, and you seconded her? Yay.
Mm-hmm, I'd be happy to second her.
Be happy not to do it. Somebody asked me, and I said I would if nobody else did, and then Tanya said that she would, and then, Stephanie?
This is Dave. I'll, I'll third Tanya, that should get her through two terms.
Excellent.
Okay, so moved and seconded Tanya as Chair, is there any objection? Okay, Tanya, the hammer is yours. Vice Chair? Any nomination for Vice Chair?
Nominate Dave Smythe, if he's willing to accept.
Oh, you beat me to a punch. No, I, I will not, I will not accept, but I was gonna nominate Jonathan Lang.
I, I can sit in chairs, I don't know what chairs do.
Okay, this is Stephanie Iker, I second Jonathan Lang, if he's willing to accept.
We have a nice little cheat sheet, Jonathan.
I, I will reluctantly accept. Right.
So moved and seconded for Jonathan as Vice Chair, is there any objection? Hearing none. Jonathan Lang for Vice Chair. Last is parliamentarian. Somebody to keep us all in order. Nominations for parliamentarian?
Monica, are you willing to accept nomination for parliamentarian?
Yeah, I can do it, I'm, uh, sure, be happy to.
So who made the nomination?
That was Stephanie Iker nominating Monica for parliamentarian.
Is there a second?
Dave Smythe second.
Any objection? Okay, Monica, you are the parliamentarian. Yay.
Monica, I think I had the job for three or four years, and never a question came to me, just out of my eye.
All right, so, reports, nothing from me, anything from Lori? Nothing from Lori. Anybody else need any report?
No, before we move to adjourn, my one housekeeping matter for the board. When I started serving, I had zero children. I now have two children, so we'll do this to which just turns seven. My term ends in October, and I will not be renewing for another term. So, just knowing how hard these people are to fill, I wanted to give the board as much advance notice to try and see if we could recruit, and I will join those efforts, additional members to serve on the board.
Okay, thank you. And then, something that probably should have happened a little earlier, I just wanted to welcome Jackie to the board.
Yeah, thank you all for having me.
Yeah, it's a great meeting.
What an interesting.
Yeah, it was an interesting one. It was good though.
So, is, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Stephanie, was that you?
Yes.
Okay. I second. And we're done.